We're live, Mr. Chairman.
Recording in progress.
There's my lady. The August 27th, 2025 meeting of the Greenville County Planning Commission is hereby called to order. At today's meeting, we will review rezoning applications, subdivision applications, and other items brought to us by staff. Unless the commission members have a question for the applicant, we will not accept additional public comment on the rezoning applications. The rezoning cases were presented at a public hearing, and that was the opportunity to hear public comments in favor of or in opposition to the rezoning cases. At today's meeting, the commission will be making its recommendation on the rezoning cases. Detailed information on each of the cases was provided to us in our electronic agenda package in advance of this meeting. Our recommendations will be forwarded to the County Council's Planning and Development Committee for their consideration and decision. The subdivision matters we will review today have been reviewed by the Subdivision Advisory Committee. At that meeting, the reviewing agencies presented their preliminary findings to staff. Based upon the comments received at the Subdivision Advisory Committee meeting, and after review of the applicable ordinance sections, staff has formulated contingencies for the preliminary plats. Anyone wishing to address the commission on subdivision matters should have signed up to speak. Again, you cannot address the commission during this meeting on resoning request. The official public hearing on these cases has already been held. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Planning Commission meeting, and Ms. Phillips is going to do our invocation.
Our Father, we thank you for this afternoon and for everyone's safe trip here. I pray, Lord, that you will give us as Planning Commission the ability to listen to the speakers and evaluate each development and determine the best way forward for our county and how they meet our standards. I pray that you would be with each of us and take us home safely, and ask all the saints in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Our meeting minutes of last month, we have four amendments. Does anybody have any additional amendments or revisions? If not, can I get a motion to approve with as amended?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the minutes for our July meeting with amendments as approved.
I'll second.
Or submitted.
You done? Mr. Holland made a motion to approve as amended, and Ms. Manning has a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I would like to add, before we start the rezoning, that Jimmy Wood resigned for personal reasons. I'm gonna miss him. And so I just wanted to let everybody know, we're just down to eight now official, Planning Commissioners, and again, thanks to Jimmy Wood and his years of service. Alrighty, Mr. Backsley.
Alright, good afternoon. The following is a brief explanation of the Planning Commission process to consider rezoning cases. Each docket will be presented, including the requested zoning, specific details of the site, as well as maps and photos of the site and surrounding area. Presentation will conclude with the staff recommendation. Staff recommendation is a result of feedback from a team of internal and external county stakeholders who review each case. After each presentation, the Planning Commission may either vote with or against staff's recommendation in order to offer, in addition to offering any additional amendments to the recommendation, all items forwarded from today's meeting will be heard by the Planning and Development Committee in person in the committee room in the North Building, which is scheduled for September 15th, 2025, at 5:00 p.m. The first docket tonight is CZ-2025-054. Property is located at 259 Beacon Street and 101 Orr Street in Greenville. The applicant is Guadalupe Villar for Justin M. Morris of Morrison Lane Solutions, LLC. The 0.16 acre subject property consists of one parcel and is located approximately 0.25 miles northwest of the intersection of Guest Street and Mills Avenue, Highway 29, and currently contains single-family dwelling under construction. This is the zoning of the surrounding area. Subject property outlined here is Zoned NC Neighborhood Commercial District. The request is for NC MC Neighborhood Commercial District major change. You can also see the surrounding property zones. The applicant states that the proposed land use is single-family residential. The applicant is proposing to modify the current requirements of the district to increase the allowed maximum gross building square footage from 3,000 square feet to 3,584 square feet, and to allow an apartment above a proposed garage. There would also be a new driveway connection to Orr Street. This is the subject site and photo showing the area surrounding the subject site. Staffs of the opinion that the request for NC Neighborhood Commercial District major change would be consistent with the Plan Greenville County Comprehensive Plan, future land use designation of core neighborhood, and would not have an adverse impact on surrounding properties. Based on these reasons, staff recommends approval with the requested rezoning to NC MC Neighborhood Commercial District major change. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for staff commissioners or a motion?
I make a motion we approve.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Phillips. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Alright, Ms. Phillips made a motion to approve. Ms. Manning has a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Alright, next docket.
The next docket is CZ-2025-055. The property is located at 212 Gridley Street, 214 Morris Street, and Bailey Street in Greenville. The applicant is Jessica R. Chapman of Site Design Inc. for Greenville County Redevelopment Authority. The 1.49 acre subject property consists of two parcels and is located approximately 0.52 miles north of the intersection of Old Buncombe Road and Cedar Lane Road, and currently contains vacant land. This is zoning of the surrounding area. Subject property outlined here is Zoned FRD, Flexible Review District. The request is for FRD MC, Flexible Review District major change, and R 7.5, Single Family Residential District. You can also see the surrounding property zones. The applicant states that the proposed land use is single-family residential. The applicant is proposing to remove the southern parcel totaling 1.03 acres from the Flexible Review District and rezone it back to its previous zoning district of R 7.5. The remainder FRD parcel would allow six residential units attached in pairs with a max gross square footage of 1,960 square feet and a maximum height of 45 feet. Homes will feature a modern farmhouse design with materials such as fiber cement or vinyl siding, asphalt shingles, standing seam metal roof, and vinyl windows. A 20-foot landscape buffer will be provided along the perimeter of the site. This is the subject site and photo showing the area surrounding the subject site. Staffs of the opinion that a successful rezoning to FRD MC, Flexible Review District major change, and R 7.5, Single Family Residential District, would be consistent with similar zoning and land uses in the area, it would not create an adverse impact on surrounding properties. Based on these reasons, staff recommends approval with the requested rezoning to FRD MC, Flexible Review District major change, and R 7.5, Single Family Residential District. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, any questions or comments? I've got one quick one. On the drawing, it says 20-foot disturbed buffer. I've never seen that.
Correct. So initially, when this FRD was approved, they were showing a 20-foot undisturbed buffer. There was an issue with, they wanted to be able to have one of the additional parking spaces located in the buffer, and then they would also need to do some grading work in the rear of the property to remove some existing concrete steps, and then regrade those out.
Okay. Just never seen that phrase before. Can I get a motion?
I've got a quick question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Phillips. Go ahead.
Why did they decide to not zone that entire, both of those properties as FRD instead of keeping them separate?
So, the initial rezoning that came through to establish the FRD district, they were both rezoned FRD as part of the same development. The request now is they're just looking to remove the southern portion from their existing FRD.
So they're not gonna develop that portion at this time?
They are still planning to develop it. Their plans for the development type have changed. Initially, they were going to do townhomes on both sides of the street.
Okay.
But I think due to some financial reasons, they will now be doing single-family on the southern portion, or detached.
Alright, thank you.
Any other questions? Somebody make a motion.
I'll make a motion to take staff's approval.
I'll second.
Alright, Ms. Manning made a motion to accept staff's recommendation to approve. Ms. Phillips has a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, next docket.
Next docket is CZ-2025-056. The property is located at 913 and 915 Lakeview Circle in Greer. The applicants are Clayton H. Pacula and Tara J. Pacula of Pacula Revocable Trust. The 1.23 acre subject property consists of one parcel and is located approximately 0.44 miles northwest of the intersection of Locust Hill Road, Highway 290, and O'Neill Road, Highway 101, and currently contains a single-family residence. This is the zoning of the surrounding area. Subject property outlined here is Zoned RS, Residential Suburban District. The request is for R 15, Single Family Residential District. You can also see the surrounding property zones. The applicant states that the proposed land use is single-family residential. This is the subject site and photo showing the area surrounding the subject site. Staffs of the opinion that a successful rezoning to R 15, Single Family Residential District, would be consistent with the Plan Greenville County Comprehensive Plan, future land use designation of suburban neighborhood, and would be consistent with similar zoning in the area. Based on these reasons, staff recommends approval with the requested rezoning to R 15, Single Family Residential District. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Backsley. Ms. Manning has a question.
It's noted on our packet on the hard copies that the acreage is .42, but on our computer packet, it's 1.23. Which one is it?
It should be 1.23.
You can take a look.
On the agenda.
Yeah, on the agenda, it's showing as .41. It's actually...
.42.
.1.23, is that what the deal is?
Yeah. I apologize, that's an error.
No apology necessary. But it's correct at 1.23, is that correct?
Correct.
Very good, thank you.
Denise. Any other questions? Or a motion?
I'll do a motion to approve staff's recommendation.
I'll second.
Alrighty, Ms. Manning has the motion to approve. Mr. Parram has a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright. We're not tying like we used to.
Just wait.
Just wait.
The next docket is CZ-2025-057. The property is located at 10696 Old White Horse Road and McWhaney Road and Travelers Rest. The applicants are Joseph M. Turner and Erica L. Turner. The 1.85 acre subject property consists of one parcel and is located at the intersection of Old White Horse Road and McWhaney Road, and currently contains vacant land. This is zoning of the surrounding area. Subject property outlined here is Zoned C 2, Commercial District. The request is for RS, Residential Suburban District. You can also see the surrounding property zones. The applicant states that the proposed land use is single-family residential. This is the subject site and photo showing the area surrounding the subject site. Staffs of the opinion that a successful rezoning to RS, Residential Suburban District, would be consistent with similar zoning in the area, would not have an adverse impact on surrounding properties. Based on these reasons, staff recommends approval with the requested rezoning to RS, Residential Suburban District. Mr. Chairman.
Alrighty, did you ever give this gentleman his money back?
That was a different docket.
Different one? Oh, shoot, okay. I thought that was this one. Oh, well. Sorry. Any questions for staff? Ms. Manning?
I'd like to see the fact that the C 2, Commercial District, would allow 16 units per acre, a total of 23 units, and he's asking to downsize to 1.7 units per acre, or three units. Bravo.
Any other questions? Or a motion?
I'll make a motion for approval, staff's recommendation.
Second.
Mr. Holland made a motion to approve. Mr. Matasevic has a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I swear this was the guy. Oh, well.
The next docket is CZ-2025-058. The property is located at 1451 Donaldson Road and Augusta Road in Greenville. The applicant is Justin M. Beasley for Roberts SC Land Greenville, LLC. The 3.32 acre subject property consists of one parcel and is located at the intersection of Donaldson Road and Augusta Road, Highway 25, and currently contains a vacant building. This is the zoning of the surrounding area. Subject property outlined here is Zoned C 2, Commercial District. The request is for S 1, Services District. You can also see the surrounding property zones. The applicant states that the proposed land use is distribution. This is the subject site and photo showing the area surrounding the subject site. Staffs of the opinion that a successful rezoning to S 1, Services District, would be consistent with the Plan Greenville County Comprehensive Plan, future land use designation of industrial, which lists primary uses of warehousing and light industrial with secondary uses of highway commercial. The requested district would also be consistent with similar zoning in the area. Based on these reasons, staff recommends approval with the requested rezoning to S 1, Services District. Mr. Chairman.
Commissioners, questions or a motion? Ms. Manning has a quick question.
Quick question. The surrounding units around this, all commercial?
So, at the moment, we have industrial uses surrounding it. There's some S 1. So just to the north of Donaldson Road, within the last couple of years, that was rezoned to S 1 and that portion of C 2. But these are largely industrial and service-related uses. And then, I believe the commercial uses are vacant land that are existing.
So it wouldn't be out of the ordinary to have something like this?
No, no.
Not at all. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve this.
I'll second.
Alright, Ms. Franklin made a motion to approve. Ms. Phillips has a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? He was the one that was withdrawn, right?
Docket 59 has been withdrawn, and that one, yes, he was...
Okay.
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure he gets his money back. I was gonna condition it. Alright, final docket.
Next docket is CZ-2025-60. The property is located at West Blue Ridge Drive, Aladdin Street, and Evergreen Street in Greenville. The applicant is Chip Coker for CEW Greenville, LLC. The 3.79 acre subject property consists of one parcel and is located approximately 0.06 miles south of the Old Buncombe Road and West Blue Ridge Drive intersection, and currently contains vacant land. This is the zoning of the surrounding area. Subject property outlined here is Zoned C 1, Commercial District, and R 7.5, Single Family Residential District. The request is for RM 10, Multi Family Residential District. You can also see the surrounding property zones. The applicant states that the proposed land use is a townhome development. This is the subject site and photo showing the area surrounding the subject site. Staffs of the opinion that while a successful rezoning to RM 10, Multi Family Residential District, would be consistent with the Plan Greenville County Comprehensive Plan, future land use designation of traditional neighborhood, it would not be consistent with the San Souci Community Plan, future land use designation of commercial. The San Souci Community Plan identifies existing commercial properties along larger road corridors, which it says are well-suited to offer accessibility to heavier traffic. Residents surveyed during the planning process for the community plan also expressed an interest in having local retail and restaurant opportunities. Based on these reasons, staff recommends denial of the requested rezoning to RM 10, Multi Family Residential District. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Backsley. Questions?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question.
Mr. Hammond.
The Formal Neighborhood Association, San Souci Neighborhood, I'm not sure if that's the absolute correct name, they were at the public hearing in favor of the rezone.
Yeah, so a representative from their organization was at the meeting and spoke in favor. There were also other members of the community there that spoke in opposition. So really, we heard from both sides.
And I guess my question is, when, if the comp, if the neighborhood plan calls for more commercial there, but the Formal Neighborhood Association is in favor of the rezone, I mean, based on staff's recommendation, the neighborhood plan takes precedent?
In this instance, we reviewed the, I guess, overall material of that plan, based on the feedback of people involved at the time. In the end, that's what staff felt was more appropriate for the area.
Okay. I'm just looking at it from a higher view, and I heard some of the surrounding neighbors that were not in favor, but you start looking at what can occur in C 1, and C 1 is the least intense of the commercial zones. You've got pawn shops, veterinary restaurants, drive-throughs, self-stories, a number of things that can occur in C 1. It just struck me that a residential, adjoining residential might be a better fit. That's just my comment.
Alrighty, thank you, Mr. Hammond. Ms. Manning?
I live in the San Souci area, and I'm part of the San Souci Alliance. The individual who testified in front of County Council has subsequently changed his mind. He didn't realize that those units would all be rentals. So he subsequently, at this point, actually has told County Council Chairman Benton Blunt that he no longer supports it.
Okay. Alrighty, any other questions, comments? Mr. Matasevic.
When were the two plans drawn up? The Plan Greenville County Plan and the San Souci Community Plan?
They were actually done very close together. So the San Souci Plan was enacted in, I believe, March of 2019, whereas our current Comprehensive Plan took effect in 2020.
2020.
So it would have been in progress around the same time.
Okay. Thank you.
Alright. Any other questions?
I don't have a question, but I'd like to make a motion. We recommend denial based on staff's recommendation.
Alrighty.
I'll second.
Yeah, I know, but half the time I'm sitting waiting. Ms. Phillips made a motion to accept staff's recommendation for denial. Mr. Holland has the second. Any further discussion? All in favor to deny, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Mr. Hammond said no. Hello? Alrighty, that does it for zonings. We're gonna change staff now, get ready for subdivisions. Bear with us, please. Are you ready?
I'm ready.
Go right ahead.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our first case is PP 2025-126, Toll Brothers at Armstrong Creek. Toll Brothers at Armstrong Creek is a proposed conventional subdivision located west of Old White Horse Road, which is a state road. The applicant is requesting 91 lots on 124.2 acres for a density of .73 units per acre. Access is provided off of Old White Horse Road and Holly Bush Road. Here is the site outlined in red, and here is Old White Horse Road looking north and looking south. Here is the site plan that was submitted in your packets. The project includes one main gated ingress egress point, one gated emergency access point, three internal roads, one cluster mailbox area with shared parking with the proposed amenity, 20-foot undisturbed screening buffers around the perimeter of the site, appropriate riparian and wetland buffers, four detention ponds, 7,080 linear feet of new private road, additional areas of open space and tree save area throughout the site. All proposed lots on site are required to meet the 25,000 square foot minimum requirement for RS for lots served by public water. The subject site is part of the Greenville County Comprehensive Plan, where it is designated as suburban edge. Suburban edges are low-density residential areas that offer opportunities for low-intensity development that is well-integrated with the natural landscape and agricultural uses. Suburban edge areas recommend a density of zero to one dwelling unit per acre. This application is requesting .73 units per acre. Here is the site and across the street from the site. A traffic impact study was conducted for the proposed Toll Brothers at Armstrong Creek development in accordance with SC DOT guidelines. A turn lane analysis was conducted utilizing the build 2028 volumes. Based on build-out volumes, no turn lanes are warranted at the site access. The capacity analysis indicates that all approaches at all study intersections are expected to operate at LOSB or better in all scenarios. Operations under build conditions are expected to be similar to no build conditions. No mitigation is necessary at the study intersections based on the capacity analysis. The recommendation from the traffic impact study was no mitigation. SAC comments provided at this past month's SAC meeting are as follows from land development. Number one, this site is located within an E. coli TMDL watershed, and based on the size of the parcel, will likely exceed 25 acres in land disturbance. Therefore, the site will need to meet SC DES anti-degradation regulations. To couple the above with the regulation with the fact that it is proposed to have 91 homes on septic tank located within close proximity to streams and wetlands on site, will likely not be able to prove in ideal that there will be no negative impact on water quality. Be prepared to lose a few lots during the review by Land Development Division. Larger buffers and larger lots will most likely be needed to meet the state requirements. Three, the project site drains into seven different subwatersheds. Downstream analysis will be at the natural low points as it leads the site and the 10% downstream watershed point. Lots 12 through 21 drain towards tax parcels ending in 100, 200, and 101, 500 without any stormwater management facility. No negative impact or increase in runoff will be allowed without approved easements and ensuring non erosive discharge velocities. Number five, ensure no negative impact to tax parcels ending in 100, 200, 103,01, and 101, 901. These items can be addressed at the land disturbance permit phase, but may impact the overall design of the subdivision. Additional comments were provided after the resubmital by REWA and Metro. From REWA, REWA has reevaluated previous septic approval issued to the developer on June 26, 2025. Since that time, REWA has received a new request involving an adjacent parcel, which includes the Armstrong Creek development. Additionally, REWA recently finalized its five-year capital improvement plan, which includes the Armstrong parcel within its planned service area. As a result, septic approval for this parcel is no longer valid. From Metro, septic was reevaluated based on receipt of an adjacent parcel request, or septic that includes a portion of the Armstrong Creek parcel, septic approval is no longer valid for the Armstrong Creek development. From flood plain, to correct the FEMA flood zone in Zone A, this was addressed at... From floodplain, to correct the FEMA flood zone in Zone A, this was addressed at the resubmital. And from roads and bridges, one, widen the 20-foot, 4-foot wide with a 44-foot right-of-way. Goodness. And number two, cul-de-sac before the gate or road needs to become private, as it does not and will not serve any other properties. That was a lot. Staff recommends approval with conditions of the plan and standard and specific requirements. The conditions are as follows. One, provide a revised preliminary plan by September 5, 2025, that addresses SAC comments from Greenville County Roads and Bridges, including road widening if necessary. Two, per the land development division comments, the plan may be subject to change to address stormwater. If the plan changes beyond the removal of lots, a revised preliminary plan will be required to be reviewed by planning commission. Number three, provide either septic or sewer approval letter from REWA and Metro. Depending on which type of approval is given, updated documents and a revised preliminary plan may be required. If sewer is selected prior to land disturbance permitting, a signed sewer availability letter and feasibility connection path to sewer will be required with updated preliminary plan to show location of sewer lines and connections and easements. Number four, on the revised plan, provide a lot table and ensure that the lot table and square footage on the plan show all lots to be at least 25,000 square feet foot in size. The minimum lot size requirements must be maintained throughout the entire process. Mr. Chairman.
I've got to ask a quick question. Can we consider this septic even though everybody says it's been denied?
The application came in from septic. That was what, like, when we did the completeness review, it came in as septic, but that approval has been removed from Metro this time.
Okay. All right. We're going to hear from the opposition first. You have a total of 10 minutes. You can use it all or spread it out. Give us your name and address for the record, please.
Scott Zimmer. I live at 247 Montview Circle. It's the subdevelop that's going to be right next to the Toll Brothers Development. I guess I can go.
Sure.
All right. So I will say on behalf of Toll Brothers, they did meet with us as a community about two weeks ago and showed us the plans and the development and everything goes with it. I am 50/50 on the fence about this project, and it has more to do with stormwater management, runoff concerns, because as you can see from the picture up there, half of the development, there's no stormwater mitigation that's going to drop down in the stream, whatever you want to call it, the stream bed that buffers our property. And we already have a lot of runoff still that we're dealing with that we're trying to get the county to come out and correct through the developer, where I guess when Stone Park was built, there was a lot of opposition because of sediment going into the stream bed, and I guess it affects a lake farther down the road. So they're supposed to clearcut all that out, which is going to make more erosion. And like I said, between the water that we already have, that we see during normal rainstorms, it already goes into the stream consistently. It's way underpowered. The county's already admitted that the development, the drainage plan, isn't right for what was in there. I don't know how it got approved, but it did. So we're trying to still get that corrected. And then the other major concern from most of the residents that are out there is the roadway itself. I mean, we live on Old White Horse, it's been there for two years now, and the average speed's about 60 miles an hour. So everybody flies up and down that road. There's hardly a police presence on there. And there's usually a major wreck at the intersection of Ro Ford and New McElhany where the Dollar General and the Sunoco is about once a month. So, and based on where the driveway's supposed to go for this thing, they're kind of putting it on a semi-shaded blind curve, which is exactly the greatest place you want to pull out when people are doing 60 miles an hour coming up and down the road to get out and around that way. So, like I said, I mean, I realize that putting these high-end houses next to ours is only going to make ours worth more, but I'm more on the side of the fact that the traffic impact study and the fact that there should be more infrastructure. The road needs to be widened. If you've been out there, I don't know how the fire marshal signed off on the emergency access road, because that's all trees where you can kind of see, I don't know, it's kind of hard to point out, but along there with that Holly Bush Road is an emergency access road, what they're designating it for right now. That is completely a tree line all the way up the road right now, so unless they clearcut all that out to allow a fire truck to turn, there's no way that fire truck's making that turn, based on the fact there's no shoulders or nothing like that. So any kind of emergency response is going to have to go up the road and probably either flip a U-turn through the Sunoco parking lot and then have to come back down to it because the Barea Fire District is down closer to 25. So that will also slow response times getting in and out of there. What was the other major thing? Yeah, so that's the biggest concern out of our community, like I said, we've had community meetings. I am the HOA president for Stone Park right now. We've had a couple meetings on this with the residents, and the biggest concern is the, how much are they going to clearcut off that ridgeline that's going to separate our development from the Toll Brothers project? And what's that going to do to the hillside as far as erosion and this water coming down into the stream bed, including, I guess, the lake that's down the road farther that this all feeds into on that side of it? That seems to be our biggest concern. And based on the plans I see up here, I don't see any kind of mitigation for that side of the hill, anywhere's along the entire right side of the development to mitigate stormwater. There's retention ponds on the opposite side, but I don't see anything on our side that's going to catch any of the water runoff. And for me, only living here three years, when it rains down here, it rains quite hard, I've noticed. And there's a lot of water that comes off of there. So with that being up on a hill, there's going to be a lot of water coming off that hillside that's going to contaminate the stream bed, at least in the beginning. Like I said, they build it better than ours was for stormwater management. All the power to them. But based on what we see so far and how ours was done and the issues that we have, we kind of, kind of have strong feelings that I don't think it's going to end up the same way on that side of it.
All right. You heard all the conditions that staff put on there concerning stormwater.
Yes. Yep. And they echo, I maintain, think about it too. Like I said, the other, like I said, big thing is the traffic.
All right, thank you, sir. No one else signed up in opposition. Someone signed up with a concern. Would you like to speak now, Mr. Snow?
Yeah, basically reiterated what Scott said about the stormwater.
Okay.
Like Toll Brothers, the organization, the quality of the product they're putting in.
Can you come up here and do the official name and address?
Yes, Jeff Snow.
I'm at 238 Montview Circle. I'm also on the HOA board in Stone Park. I'm over, if he's 50/50, I'm probably 70/34. I think it's a quality organization. They were proactive in coming out and meeting with us and presenting the plan. The density of the plan, I think, is favorable. The big concern is the ridge between from lots six through 14 that goes down into the creek bed and then back up into our community was decimated, that hill was kind of decimated by Helane. So we've lost about a third of the trees on that hill already. And the concern, and if they can mitigate it, great, but there is a concern that if they clearcut the lots at the top, we will get more erosion down that hill and lose more trees, and the wetlands and the stream below would be in jeopardy.
All right.
But I'm for it, if they can mitigate it.
Thank you, sir. That's it for opposition. Those in favor, again, get the total of 10 minutes. Drew Fricks.
Like he said, I'm Drew Fricks, and I own the land that Toll Brothers is buying. I've been over every single inch of it. It does have water on one side near McElhany Road. It's Armstrong Creek, which is a major creek.
Can you give us your address real quick for the record, please?
It is 210 Lookoff Drive, Cleveland, South Carolina.
All right, thank you, sir.
Anyhow, Toll Brothers has been very good to work with. They're going to build houses that I can't even afford to live in one of them. You know, they're going to be that nice of houses, and I don't think it's going to be any problem whatsoever to their neighborhood. And I think it's great that they had a meeting with their neighborhood, because aside from their neighborhood, I think they got 39 houses in your neighborhood. And then there's a wedding venue next to this land, and an engineer from Greenville County has a garage right beside it that he's going to build a house one day. There's no other houses anywhere close to it. And it's just, it worked that good for me. I was telling them I bought that land, and 11 days after I bought it, my wife was killed in a head-on collision. So it hasn't really meant that much to me, except for hunting. I hunted it a lot. But it didn't mean as much to me because we already had a house picked out, and if all that would have worked, they'd had one neighbor. You know, that would have been it. But anyhow, when you're sitting there and you've got a reason not to enjoy a piece of land, and then somebody offers you three times what you paid for it, it kind of makes your mind up for you. So I just think it's going to have 60 acres that's not a house is on it. That's a lot of open space for 124 acres. That's almost 50% open space, which I think they should be commended, because I could see one more little street going in there, my way of looking at it. So anyhow, that's all I got to say is, and also, I do want to say one more thing. One of their retention ponds is right beside me, and the county makes the retention ponds first, and then they grade the houses, and all of the houses are below the retention pond, so the only water that that retention pond is getting is one little ditch. I've never seen the water higher than about this deep in it. So it's just a retention pond that's worthless. And then they've got a big one at the other end, but I can't really see it unless I go off a mine. But I can't understand how they can approve septic tank. The closest sewer is Churchill Falls, which is probably, I guess, a half a mile or three-quarters of a mile down the road. Now, how can they make them do sewer when they already approved the septic tanks? Once it's approved, that ought to be over and done. And then they didn't have to have septic tanks, which I'm not faulting, I mean sewer, which I'm not faulting them, because we all know we have to have septic tanks on our side, Old White Horse Road and down to Reedie River. But that's about all I got to say. I probably said too much.
No, you get 10 minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Somebody else signed up to speak in favor, but I cannot read this. Andrew? All right. Would you like to speak?
I know, sir.
All right, okay. The only other person I got here is a representative from the developer Toll Brothers. Would they like to speak?
Yes, sir.
How much time we got?
Six minutes, six seconds.
All right, yeah, six minutes.
Okay.
Name and address, please, sir.
Yes, sir. Michael Kane, 124 Verde Boulevard, Suite 203, Greenville, South Carolina, 29607. Good evening, planning commissioners. Good evening, staff. Megan, appreciate working with you through all this time. As you've heard through Megan's conditions, we are totally agreeable with the conditions. We'll work with staff for all the stormwater comments that came up. Obviously, we haven't gotten into that point with the preliminary plat. But during our due diligence, we've been under contract with this piece of land for quite a number of months. We obviously have hired professional consultants to go out and do their, perform their services. And as we were underway with our due diligence, we obviously looked to try to see if sewer was available at the time. And obviously, as Ms. Megan mentioned to you all, when we were at the SAC meeting, we did have a septic approval in hand from REWA and Metro. Obviously, we were a little blindsided after making our first round of comments with their retroactive decision to change it to denial. I would ask if you all wouldn't mind, as it's a condition from Megan, that your consideration for the preliminary plat approval, we're not looking to change density. Obviously, it complies with the future land use of zero to one dwelling units per acre. 91 lots, obviously, is justifiable from the standpoint it complements the adjacent property or the adjacent neighborhood, Stone Park. We just, I think we need to have a meeting with REWA and Metro to understand what's at play. And we have extended out since their comment has become, made us aware of it. We've been trying to schedule a meeting to ask about the timing, because if, I think, Megan, on your notes, I don't know if you want to go back to it, they were talking about a capital improvement project. We just don't know what that timing is. They haven't said anything. So I would ask for your consideration for the preliminary plat approval tonight, with the condition that we either vet out a sewer plan, or we can try to go back to the septic approval that was given to us at the beginning of the SAC. Otherwise, as you heard from traffic, RTIA has been approved by SCDOT. No mitigation is required, but we've been complying with staff since we've made the formal submittal process. So again, planning commissioners, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer it. I do have some folks from my design team here and other folks from Toll Brothers. But again, would love to have your consideration for preliminary plat approval tonight for this subdivision.
All righty. Commissioners, any questions for the developer?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Phillips?
Well, I don't know if staff or the engineer can answer my question. I'm looking at the tree survey plat included, and it states that total disturbed acres on site would only be 65 acres. Is that a, an absolute? That you'll only disturb a portion of the site? That is, you know, you're only going to disturb 65 of the 124 acres?
If I'm not mistaken, can I call my engineer to come up?
No grading or anything will be done anywhere else.
Do you want to speak to that?
Dean Aldrich, apologize for summer cold.
What's your address?
That's approximately what we're going to disturb. I mean, if we go to, if they were forced into like doing a pump station or a sanitary sewer, we may have to disturb some more to get the sanitary sewer to that point.
I understand that.
Ms. Phillips may I add to that? We're not, we're not in the interest of this particular subdivision to clearcut all the way from property and property line. Like, this has been vetted out. We've been, we've been doing our due diligence since the beginning. And as mentioned from Mr. Fricks, we definitely want to reserve the open space as shown, even though it's not an open space development, it's conventional lots. We'll do everything we can to try to not clear above and beyond what's proposed right now, but it's a plus or minus swing.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Parr, let's start over here.
Did you say that you guys are not interested in lowering density at all, as some of the report stated, that you might have to do? I just wanted to understand that statement.
Yeah, understanding staff's comment, I mean, we're not going to just nix lots right off the bat. Right now, this is a preliminary plat approval. We obviously have to do more evaluation as we get into the land disturbance permit. So as we work with our engineer and that, we're going to evaluate, we're going to keep in touch with staff, we're going to try to come up with the best plan, and obviously, we would like to be considered for the 91 lots that are shown on the plat currently.
Yeah, so a couple of my concerns are obviously some of the things that were stated in here. So right now, they do not have approval to move forward with septic, is the way I understand that. It's been retracted.
Yeah, it was taken away during this application process.
But there's a condition on, if it's approved tonight, there's a lot of other things that have got to happen from erosion and...
Absolutely.
And the, what's the other thing? The whole E coli and flooding and floodplain, okay.
That's, I mean, that's typical review for land development for the grading permit process.
It just sounded, I mean, these were one of the first ones I saw that has had a lot of potential water contamination issues. That's one of my concerns, the ecological downstream downside. And then the other is, I don't know if the other commissioners went out there, but I actually went and visited the site on Saturday afternoon, and there wasn't a huge volume of traffic, but like someone said, it looked like everybody's at a race, racetrack there. And so that is one of my concerns as well, but I think I understand, got the answers. Thank you.
All righty, thank you, sir. Ms. Manning?
I'm curious about the watershed problem and that issue. I went out to the property myself. I walked the property, went down to that little gate, what have you, and was scared to death that we tried to turn around, and I was worried that there was too much mud that was there to be able to turn around. I was not looking forward to getting my car stuck. But you're going to, you know, and we all know, that there's going to be some real solid water issues. I listened to the gentlemen's that are with Stone Park, and they've had a Dickens of a time trying to get the water issues taken care of for them. Their developer apparently has left them, so to speak, high and dry, but not really, soaking wet probably. I just want to make sure that the commitment, and Toll Brothers has a fantastic reputation, but I do really want to make sure that those issues of stormwater mitigation are truly addressed here.
Yes, ma'am.
Our staff will take care of that.
Yes, Mr. Bickel, I agree with what you're saying, but just to reassure the board, Toll Brothers is a developer and home builder, so everything is in our wheelhouse. So it's not, some situations are developed by third-party developers and turned over to other home builders. In this particular situation, we are fully responsible. In this particular situation, we are fully responsible right from the start that we dig land to close out the whole property. So we will do everything we can, to Mr. Vickel's point, to comply with the county and work with them hand in hand.
Well, I must say, it's a beautiful piece of property.
Yep.
And Toll Brothers, I think you're going to have a fantastic product out there. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say, not a lot of applications come before us where the opposition and the folks that are for it are really, the opposition is really not opposing this, they're just looking for a few answers. And I'd like to commend you guys for holding a meeting and letting the folks know what's planned. Sounds like you really thought this out. So I don't say that often, maybe the first time, but thank you.
I think it is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all.
You better appreciate that from him. Again, I have all the faith in staff, our stormwater folks, engineers, I mean, they're all DHEC, whatever DHEC is called anymore, certified. Any other questions for the developers? Can I get a motion?
I'll do the motion to pass the Toll Brothers based on the staff's recommendation.
Along with all conditions.
Along with all conditions. Thank you.
Is there a way we can add some sort of condition regarding the site disturbance? If it exceeds a certain amount?
Hey.
Not to exceed?
That's really beyond our purview. I mean, again, staff, staff takes care of all that. I mean, we're, this is, we're agreeing or approving or trying to approve a preliminary plat.
That plat states that percentage that will not be disturbed.
If they needed a retention pond that's twice as big.
Correct.
They're going to disturb more.
That's different.
I mean, there's many things that it's not worth staff's and the applicant's effort to come back to us if, if they choose to grade another half acre to make sure the stormwater is managed properly.
You're right. We, we see plenty with minor changes that
Yeah, so I really
I agree. Okay, I'll second that motion then.
All right. Ms. Manning made a motion to approve with all the staff's recommendations and conditions. Ms. Phillips has the second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. All right, you got it for 8-0.
Thank you all.
Mr. Chairman, last staff a question on this most latest docket. And we're passed, so thank you, guys. But the, the REWAL-Metro question is puzzling to start with, maybe a little, a little disturbing as well, that they go all the way through SAC comments, get septic approval, and then Metro slash REWAL come back and say, hey, guys, we got a five-year plan on a capital project and we're going to, we're going to back off the septic approval.
Because we might get you sewer two years from now.
We might get you sewer two years or three or four years from now. And I, and I get, I get the Metro-ReWAL side of it, they're making a sizable investment and, and this, this goes septic, it takes, it takes them off, off the sewer capacity line. But it, it seems pretty unfair for the developer and the landowner to go, they've probably been working on this thing for somewhere between 12 and 24 months, would be my guess, that's the typical lifespan of these. And then to be pushed out on a five-year plan with REWAL, and I'm not, I'm not burdening staff with
I was going to say, it's not staff's fault.
With REWAL, but I'm just curious, that, that's a little disturbing for REWAL to come back and say, hey, you know, here, here's a five-year plan out here, guys, you know, we may have sewer up there in five years.
But how do we have proof of it sometimes?
We have no
You don't, you don't.
We don't. I'm
And this isn't, this isn't the first, first time this has occurred.
Uh huh.
And it's not just the developers that suffer, it's landowners too that have investments.
He wanted to vent, and I, you know, I, it is odd, but
It's part of the process.
It's part of the process. All right. Next docket subdivision.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is PP 2025 51 Logan Reserve reconsideration. This item is a reconsideration of an item that was previously presented at the May 2025 Planning Commission meeting. Some plan information has changed. Would you like for me to present the item again?
Yes, please.
All right, thank you.
Well, some commissioners wanted to
Just to change
Just to change, we don't need to see, we're, we're considering the changed updated drawing.
I'll give you the, real quick, I'll give you the real quick rundown then. The applicant is requesting 88 lots on 37.26 acres for a density of 2.36 units per acre. This is down from the previous requested density of 2.68 units per acre. Access is provided off of Cambridge Drive, however, the location of the accesses, the emergency and the primary access have been adjusted to address previously noted concerns. Here is the updated plan. You'll notice some additional green spaces as well as the buffer being removed per staff's previous comment from the detention pond area, as well as the movement of the access point along Devinger Road. I have all the additional traffic impact information if you would like to hear it, but none of that has changed from previous meetings. There were no additional SAC comments beyond what was previously done, and those things were addressed with this revised plan.
Okay. Commission, it's up to you. Would you like to hear them? I mean, nothing's changed. All right, keep going, please.
Staff recommends approval of the plan with the standard and specific requirements. Mr. Chairman?
All righty. The first person who signed up in opposition, again, you get a total of 10 minutes. Letha Dibler? Did I get anywhere close?
Dibler.
Dibler, all right. But I got Letha right?
Yes, she did. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm Letha Burdette Dibler. I am the previous owner of 1032 Hudson Road and 203 Devinger Road, the acreage out there that was sold to Edwards Road Baptist Church. It's been several years ago. It was my family's intention when the property was sold that it was to be used as a church and a church only. Whatever buildings that church decided to build for their congregation. And now we're finding out that they intend perhaps to sell it, to have a subdivision built on it. And that's just not possible as far as Devinger Road is concerned. There's so many family homes out there and so much traffic as it is, especially at eight o'clock in the morning when you're trying to either get to work or to a store, the traffic is just horrendous. And I am opposed to this proposed plan.
Thank you, ma'am. Assistant, correct. You assume correctly. Name's Kurt Dibler, 108 Burnham Court, Greenville, South Carolina. You probably gathered as much that I, Letha's my wife and married her 15 years ago. I moved down here, I moved into a house on Running Mead Road in Foxcroft in 1975. I was two. We grew up there in that house. It was approximately a mile southeast of the proposed subdivision. I now live on Burnham Court, which is about a mile due south of the proposed subdivision. So to say that I'm mildly familiar with the parcel would be a profound understatement. It's a, I don't have to say what a beautiful plot of land it is. It's a, it's a lovely combination of mature old-growth woods and fields, which has remained largely undisturbed until now. The land's been in my wife's family since shortly after the Civil War. And in its current state, they purchased it from the government and held it for approximately 140 years before transferring it to Edwards Road. And my wife, regarding the, the transference, she's a, as she mentioned, her father was very serious. Loved the land and was very serious about protecting its legacy and especially its use. And I'm getting in, getting in on this fairly late in the game, but I'll catch up quickly as you'll find. I'm a pretty, pretty quick study. So I'm in the process of pulling deeds right now. We're prepared to, to retain real estate, attorneys if necessary to speed up the process to look through things. But Mr. Burdette passed away in 1995 and then passed all that land as is by deed to the, to the rest of the family in, at that time, and then they held it in trust until 2000. But it was a, a high priority for Mr. Burdette that that land be used strictly, or any, any future development on that land be confined to the building of a church or such buildings that will serve the needs of said church. I don't have, I don't have anything material to present right now on that land use covenant, but I have, I have it with a very high degree of confidence that we will find it. So, and, and I don't like to go into the law, but there certainly are some, some more sentimental concerns that I have, largely the, the ecological impact it might have on all the, all the animals and birds that reside in those, those old woods. I can imagine that would be rather substantial. They'll be, you know, subjected to either being killed in the development or materially displaced, which would probably result in a lot of roadkill. And Letha's already discussed the onerous, onerous effects that we can certainly expect on traffic, which are just two-lane roads right now. I don't anticipate county council having any plans to widen Hudson Road or Devinger Road. I gather, I'm, I'm safe in that assumption anytime soon. I think it's fair to say they're going to stay two lanes, both of them. Hudson Road's a death trap. Devinger Road's not far behind, and I'm speaking, you know, about current conditions. So I, I appreciate you folks letting me say a few words. I'm sorry, I don't, I haven't had much time to dig into the paperwork and the specifics, but I will. And I trust that, that you'll, you'll administer this with, with a high degree of stewardship. So thank you very much.
A question for you. So you hadn't found any deed restrictions, anything?
I have not yet.
Yet?
Well, I understand, I understand the importance of having this
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's something. Yeah, I'll tell you later.
But what I know about it was told by, told to me directly by Letha on a number of occasions over the years.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Sandy Farvey?
Farry.
Farry. How much time we got?
Three minutes, 43 seconds.
Three minutes, 43 seconds.
I live at 105 Chateau Drive. My name is Sandy Farry. I've been a proud resident of Maryfield Park for over 18 years. I'm here today to respectfully ask the planning committee to require a binding agreement from LS Homes to fund critical traffic deterrent measures as a condition for approving Logan Reserve development. If this property is legal, if, if this property is legally available to sale, the project will bring 88 new homes, potentially 264 residents. If each of those households generate just 10 vehicle trips per day, that's over 2,640 new trips through Maryfield Park daily, the much shorter route to Pelham Road. Maryfield Park's roads are already struggling to keep our pedestrians safe. A FedEx driver was just hit while delivering packages and two pets have already been killed. To make matters worse, our Pelham Road Elementary School crossing guard was removed, putting our 134 Maryfield children at even greater risk. The developer has expressed a willingness to help with traffic solutions, and I ask that this support be made in a formal requirement, not a gesture that will get lost in the shuffle. Funding measures like speed bumps, speed radar signals are essential. A reasonable contribution such as $500 per Maryfield lot could make a meaningful impact on the safety without placing a burden on Greenville County. It would be much less than he would charge his own residents for their yearly HOA dues. It isn't just about traffic, it's about protecting our lives and our community. Let's make sure that we get this right for Maryfield Park. 134 children depend on you. I also have, just in three days, 111 forms signed by our residents. I'd like to leave you guys copies to read all of the complaints with our current traffic situation. Thank you for your attention to this. We appreciate your service.
Thank you, ma'am. Kendra Fleming? And company? How much time?
A minute, 20. My name is Kendra Fleming, 1 New Haven Drive, and I live, I'm a lifelong resident of Greenville County. I live on New Haven Drive in Maryfield Park with my husband and our four-year-old son. I want to share our serious concerns about the proposed Logan Reserve subdivision. Our street is already, already used as a cut-through by drivers dodging the light at Devinger and Hudson. By the applicant's own numbers, the subdivision generates about 900 daily trips and about 12% of the morning turns, morning left turns at Devinger and Hudson would come from this project. That is a meaningful change at a strange corner and additional opportunities for dangerous encounters with one of the 134 resident children walking to bus stops, bikes, or playing outside. As a mother to a four-year-old child, I cannot accept that risk, and as our representatives, neither should you. A traffic impact study was prepared for the developer by a company in North Carolina, but the study did not include a single road through Maryfield Park or any daily baseline data for Devinger Road. If you do not count us, you cannot protect us. There are 134 children in Maryfield Park, they will bear the risk of this traffic. I ask for approval only with clear conditions. Require the entrance on Hudson, not Devinger. Require real counts inside of Maryfield Park, including New Haven and Continental, and commit to post-opening checks with fixes paid for by the developer if cut-through increases. Put safeguards in place for pedestrians and children before any move-in, such as speed bumps, speed radar monitors, and speed enforcement. We welcome growth, we do not accept preventable harm. Protect our neighborhood and our children. Thank you.
Oh, you hit it dead on it. All righty, that's everybody that we could get to in opposition. In favor, Jeff Randolph. Name and address, 10 minutes and all that.
Jeff Randolph, 607 Pendleton Street, Greenville, South Carolina. There is some other people who are with me, engineer Kevin Tumlin, and also representatives from LS Homes. My company, the Randolph Group TRG Communities, is working in conjunction with LS Homes, your applicant, and also representing the owner of the property, Edwards Road Baptist Church. As a reminder, the church owns 57 acres and intends to sell 37 acres, a portion, and retain approximately 20 acres utilizing the property for present uses of ministry and recreation, including the use of the recreation for residents of the proposed development as well as organizations such as Eastside High School and Mitchell Road. For the record, since it was just raised, there is no restrictions in any contract or title or deed restriction of the use of the property. This matter was researched by the church prior to the decision to sell. The senior pastor of the church is here and can address that for you. LS Homes and TRG Communities has developed multiple neighborhoods in the area, including Brighton, Caris Brook, and Tuscan Woods, as well as constructed numerous homes in this area. These communities continue to be well-received by the market. The plan under consideration this afternoon consists of 37 acres. Land plan includes 88 lots for single-family detached homes. This represents a density of 2.27 units to the acre, which is comparable to the density of a septic tank neighborhood. The original plan included 100 units and a density of 2.6 units per acre. Plan has a single entrance on Devinger Road at a location dictated by S, by SE DOT. The proposed entrance does not align with the cross entrance does not align with the cross-street in the adjacent Maryfield neighborhood. There is a screened emergency access provided as requested, connected by grass paved material. We've adjusted the location of this emergency access to the east and not aligned with the cross-street. There was a traffic study conducted under SC DOT guidelines and guidance during school months and hours, as required. SC DOT has reviewed the study. The study was updated and provided to staff to reflect the proposed reduced density. Number of trips is shown in that study. The study overall showed no impacts to existing traffic conditions. There's a stubout of the retained property of the church to allow for future connectivity, not required. This stubout also provides pedestrian connectivity to the recreational fields existing on the retained property. The existing stubout from Richfield Terrace is not utilized. This plan indicates open space of 38%, not including the land and the water easement. The original plan included 25% open space. Plan under consideration indicates two large central parks easily accessible to all residents. We've also included access to the balance of the open space, including the retained property of the church and the recreation. We have had conversations with multiple residents along Devinger Road to ensure safe access per SC DOT. Both Devinger and Hudson are DOT streets in our county. That includes speeding along Devinger and mail service. We've learned that the Devinger residents have to cross the street, so we'll work with the postmaster to alleviate that issue. We've also had a request to consider the location of the construction entrance, which we would certainly do. We had a neighborhood meeting with residents of the adjoining Maryfield Park neighborhood regarding their concerns, including existing speeding and existing cut-through traffic from Devinger to Pelham Road. We have agreed to work with these residents as they gather petitions to seek approval and funding for proposed speed humps, signage, and other mechanisms. LS has agreed to contribute funding toward those measures. In summary, we're proposing an attractive development plan of single-family detached homes at a low density with functional and usable open space that meets the guidelines of the Development Code. Again, there is no restrictions that the church is aware of. They've researched it. If there is a restriction, if there happens to be a deed restriction, even with the passing of this, that deed restriction would trump this decision. But that matter has been put to bed.
Okay.
Appreciate your consideration, and I'm available to answer any questions as well as others.
Any questions for the speaker?
One, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hall?
So are you saying that you're willing to help Maryfield Park finance speed humps in the existing neighborhood?
And I'm going to let Brian Lazarus speak to that, because he was actually at the meeting. I was out of town, but...
We had those discussions afterward.
Hold on. Any more questions for the speaker? Hold on here. All right, Mr. Lazarus. Thank you, Mr. Randolph.
Thank you. Brian Lazarus, 12 Wade Street, Greenville.
Okay.
We did. We had that conversation, and it's up to the neighborhood to have those studies done, and we would be more than happy to contribute to that and to be involved in those conversations and not stand in the way of helping them in any way that we possibly can. But we don't. They have to apply for those items with the county, and the county's got to do that study and so forth. But we certainly are here to help. We met. We did discuss that, but we're in the beginning of that stage right now.
Mr. Manning?
You say the pastor is here from the church. Is that correct?
Yes.
Can we talk with him for just a moment?
Yes, I believe he's on...
Yeah, I believe he's on your list.
Yeah, I would have gotten to him eventually.
Also, my name's Evan McFarlane, lead pastor at Edwards Road Baptist Church. Also, this is Rhett Hancock. Rhett was head of our committee to help lead through this process.
Why are you selling the property?
We're selling the property to fund a renovation of our current facility. And so the proceeds, the profit from this will go to investing in our ministry for the future of Edwards Road going forward.
There seems to be a second entrance exit. Is there a possibility that maybe the church might be willing to grant easement to Hudson Road? Is that a possibility?
Sure. Well, so everybody just come on.
So as part of the development of this land plan, it's not required to have a stubout to the 20 acres of retained property.
I understand that. I understand that.
But not knowing exactly what was going to be on the 20 acres, you've got a ball field, there is a dirt road that comes from Hudson Road, we wanted to protect that connectivity. So if we didn't protect that connectivity, it could never happen. By putting in a stubout into the 20 acres, there is that possibility, if it's ever needed.
So that actually may solve a lot of the traffic issues that the Maryfield Park people might have.
I'm not a traffic engineer.
Yeah, but...
And neither am I. I'm just trying to come up with some compromise here.
I think that, you know, if you think about an entrance that goes out to Hudson Road, and let's just say it's for the use of those ball fields, then you could create someone coming from on Hudson Road making you turn into the Edwards Road retained property through this neighborhood and continue on into Maryfield Park or into some other space.
Hold on, hold on.
Would you all like to leave or stay?
Hold on.
Oh, no.
I think the main thing for us would be by retaining a stubout, we're protecting the long-term connectivity for vehicles and pedestrians that could go that route.
But that might be a compromise for the Maryfield folks, to have that separate exit and entrance over to Hudson Road. Would you not agree?
Very good idea.
I think, again, I think by providing the possibility for that, but the distance from whatever this property line is, I guess that would be the western property line from there over to Hudson Road. It's a significant distance, and not knowing what could happen on that. So for instance, if Edwards Road decided, Edwards Road Baptist decided to build a second soccer field, would you have a road going through the soccer field? You're not sure where that road potentially may want to go.
Well, we have the pastor here. I mean, would that be a possibility of a compromise here?
To Jeff's point there, we intend to retain that property for ministry use, for community outreach, those kind of things. And I think to what he's speaking to there is the possibility of going ahead and putting a road through there could really hinder whatever future plans would exist there.
Okay, that's all I wanted to hear. That's all I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Mr. Farm?
So I don't remember the gentleman's name a moment ago that was explaining about the stubout. Another option is to put in another subdivision, and I suspect that may be what's coming. The other thing that you actually made their point is that you don't want to have a bunch of traffic coming in there. So I'm a little puzzled by that response.
Can I speak to that?
Sure.
There's no plans for another subdivision. It's for ministry. If we may build a church, we might build a soccer field, we may do something on those lines, but not a subdivision.
With all respect, only the man above knows that.
Well, no. No. We know that we aren't going to do subdivision.
I don't know what the future is, and neither do you, sir.
Mr. Farm, come on.
I have another question. I'm sorry. I lost my train of thought. Go ahead.
All right. Ms. Phillips?
Can I speak real quick to a question that was raised earlier or not?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. In regards to the speaker of the previous owner of the land, I have met with the chairman of that committee, talked through how that transaction happened. Our plan at that time was to build a church there from one campus to another. We had run out of room where we were. That was our plan 24 years ago, was to build a church there. We did not say that was the only thing we could build there. We didn't say when we're going to build it. We didn't say if we're going to build it. But that was our plan 24 years ago to build a church there. It didn't happen. We didn't build a church there. We didn't have the need to build a church there. So I just wanted to make it clear. We never indicated that's the only thing we'd ever do there. There's no... We've researched every documentation there is to that, and there is none. So I did just wanted to clear that up, too.
All righty, Ms. Phillips. How much time do we have?
I have a couple of questions for staff.
All right.
Just to clarify. So I know in the application and the conditions, it states that the additional property cannot be further developed. It's not planned on it. Will that be noted on the plat and the final plat? So in the future, if that were to be attempted...
We can't put a deed restriction on someone else's property.
No, no, no. I'm not talking about myself. I'm talking about staff.
The county can't put a deed restriction on someone else's property.
Do you mean the additional property to the west?
Yes.
It's not part of the bounds of the current preliminary plan.
Okay. Okay. So there's no restrictions on that whatsoever?
No. What's your other question?
To stop them. Hold on a minute. Oh.
We got problems down there.
Is the... The permits will not be able to be submitted until the property has gone through, you know, title search and change in ownership and purchase and all that. Am I correct?
Title search is not our purview either. Can we get past that, Lois?
It's up to their attorney. It's not up to county.
Well, we have seen properties that had deed restrictions and almost get sold up under things that were not the intention, and I don't want to see that occur in this situation. I don't think that's the case.
That's not something that's part of staff's process or purview. I would say that most...
But does the property have to be in, let's say, the developer's hands before they apply permits?
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yes.
Yes, that's what I was asking.
The property would have to be under the ownership of the developer at the time that it, you know, gets changed over, because you have to... The developer has to change hands to the HOA to, you know, for the open space easements and things like that. So there has to be a sale of property, and typically when the sale is done, this is not something that typically a title search is done at that point, but that's just standard practice on a real estate side. That's not something the county is a part of. It doesn't mean that I know that it would happen, for example, but the property does change hands prior to permits being issued.
Okay, that was my question. Yes. All right. That's what I wanted to verify. And can I make a comment? I don't think Maryfield's park traffic problem is necessarily the developer's responsibility, as long as they make the requirements that they should provide. I mean, it sounds like there's been a lot of traffic and development in your neighborhood, and I understand that. I drove through there today, but I passed one car, which is nothing like my more rural side of the county, where I pass a lot of cars. Not that you don't have a problem, but unfortunately, as commissioners, as Frank would say, that's not in our purview. Sorry.
Mr. Lazarus, are you done? Kevin Tumlin, would you like to speak?
I'm fine, thank you.
We stopped the clock. When we ask questions, the clock is stopped. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor? All right. Thank you all.
Ms. Chair.
Mr. Farm.
I have one last question, one I couldn't remember a moment ago, because we kept changing speakers. It was to Mr. Lazarus. I want to make sure I understood his commitment on the record, that if they get it approved, you're willing to fund speed humps, breaks in the neighborhood.
We had expressed a desire to participate in that, yes.
I'm trying to understand what... I'm trying to understand what clarity on participate means.
I mean, they asked for a blank check, or what are we doing?
We can't...
I'm just trying to understand what I heard.
I agree. That's not part of our...
I completely agree.
I was asking the question because the first... No, it's on. The first speaker said, "We've met with them, and I wanted some clarification. Money-wise, how much are you willing to..." But that's really not our purview, but a few strategically placed speed humps in this circled area would solve a lot of those cut-through problems.
Good neighbor, shite.
You know, and...
But county has to approve those.
That's county.
Not us.
And that's not the Planning Commission.
We can't condition.
Right. I understand that.
All right. You understand that?
I do.
Thank you.
I'm not making a motion for any condition. I understand.
All right. Any other questions for staff, the speakers?
I'd like to make one comment.
Ms. Manning?
This has been a very tough development. I went out personally and looked at it as you did, Corey, and I'm listening to the people that are here. I must say that I want to thank the developer for taking the time to be able to sit and talk with the residents. I also appreciate the fact that when we initially turned down this subdivision, that there was a response, a common sense response from the developer to reduce the number of units. These are patio homes. Your target market is probably going to be empty nesters and retirees and what have you. And I do know, it's a possibility, but what I'm saying is, is that we at least have a developer here that has listened to the call from the Planning Commission to have common sense developments. And while there has been some ancillary problems, obviously with the traffic and what have you, but we do have a developer here that has been offering to be able to help subsidize and to help work with county roads to be able to mitigate any of the possibilities. And I would appeal to the church, why not go ahead and grant the ability to have a road over to Hudson?
Yes.
I just, I think that that would be a good compromise, but I'm only a Planning Commissioner. Thank you.
Was that really necessary? It's between you and the church, not us. These are DOT, state-owned roads. We can't control these roads. They have a traffic impact study that we must adhere to by law. You all can shake your head all you want. You're on. And until you sit up here, we can talk about that later. I'm sorry. These are state roads. I mean, I thought they've done a real good job giving us some meaningful dimensions on some open space. All right. Any other questions, comments?
Can I make a motion?
Sure.
We approve.
All righty, Ms. With all...
We approve the new revised plan for consideration. And were there any additional conditions?
No, I don't think there were any conditions, were there? Staff's been so long.
I didn't see any.
Ms. Phillips makes a motion to approve the new revised plan with standard and specific requirements.
I'll second it.
Ms. Manning has a second. Any further discussion? All in favor to approve, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say no.
No.
Ms. Farm says no. It's approved seven to one. All right, let's go on to the variances. Or let's all wait a minute until the... Ms. State, let's try to go ahead. I was waiting for everybody to...
All right. This is DA 2025-122, request for drainage easement abandonment at 355 English Oak Road. According to the applicant, their request is to modify, move, or potentially abandon an easement to install a pool and pool house. Per the applicant, the easement was established in 1995 for drainage. Location of part of the easement does not have water flowing over or through it. No underground drainage system exists, only requesting a diagonal part of the easement crossing the backyard to be modified, and the easement down center of the property line between neighboring properties...
and the easement down center of the property line between neighboring properties can remain. And five, stormwater currently flows atop current ditch to the back of property, then sheds out. Water never flows across the diagonal easement as drawn on the plat. Here is an image of the required letter signed by property owners affected. Here is the site outlined in red. And here's a survey of the site with the location of the easement shown in green. Here is an image of the site. SAC comments gathered at last month's meeting were from Land Development. This area is requesting, their area requesting abandonment is the natural low spot in which, low spot which in case of large storm events could drain through this area approximately 6.73 acres, which include a portion of both Bobcat Trail and English Oak Road and homes that front those roads. The Land Development Division will not object to the abandonment of the requested drainage easement, but will also put the property owner on notice that we will not accept any liability if the pool and pool house is inundated with stormwater runoff during large storm events. Additionally, the property owner must take care that they do not divert and concentrate the currently dispersed stormwater runoff onto adjoining property owners, which is a violation of state law and could result in a civil liability from anyone negatively impacted by grading activities needed to construct the pool and pool house. It is recommended that a landscape architect is hired to ensure that the stormwater is appropriately accounted for in the overall design. Staff recommends conditional approval of the drainage and utility easement abandonment as requested. The approval conditions are as follows. One, submit a revised survey plat to be recorded at the Greenville County Register of Deeds office showing the area that was approved to be abandoned. The plat must also include notes regarding approval and reference the application number and date of approval. Mr. Chairman?
All right. Thank you, Ms. Statean. Nobody has signed up to speak either in favor or in opposition. And I'm going to go ahead and ask some real obvious questions. I used to live in Stonehaven. We had utility easements down every side. Where'd they go?
Drainage and utility easements?
No, utility. Just power, cable, phone.
Why do we care about that? I'd like to make a motion. We approve the application.
You're on a roll here, aren't you? Well, my other question is, you got that giant backyard. Why do you want to shove a pool all the way over there on the edge? It is our problem on easements, on easements.
If they want to put a pool there, the county's fine. Well, let them put the pool there.
Should we leave the two of you alone? We can evacuate the building.
Has the permit, so I'm assuming this went to permit, and then permit said, "Oh, we got a problem. You got to go get a variance." Is that what happened?
You had a drainage easement, that's why.
Most people don't realize they have a drainage easement.
I'm not aware of the permitting history.
So, nobody's really gone out and looked at the site to validate?
You mean, like, for the footings of the, for the actual pool?
Validate, there's no drainage occurring here.
Typically, they would have drawn the pool on here, too.
Staff, I'm not sure if they've been out or not. They may have been. I, I can't speak either way on that.
When you say staff recommends conditional approval, conditioned on what?
The condition that's listed to provide the revised survey plat.
Thank you.
But they won't go out and look at it. They'll just look at the plat, correct?
The, when they do a, a pool permit, their staff does have to go out and, and ensure that it's being done correctly.
They do.
Typically, when there's an easement, if you build or place something on top of that easement and whatever the easement is for, and they come in and do repairs, then they can remove or damage the property that you've put there.
They can dig up that pool deck in a minute.
But the request is to abandon the easement. That, that's what we're voting on, whether to let them abandon the easement or not. And the county has said they're fine with the easement being abandoned.
Ms. Hannah made a motion to approve. Mr. Matasevic has a second. Any further discussion?
Yes.
All righty. Ms. Franklin?
Do we know if there's any drainage running on other property now, currently?
That's what it says. If there is, they have to fix it.
Yeah, so that's mentioned in, in Land Development's review. So, they did look at how the site drains when they reviewed that request for the variance. And this is the response from Land Development. They're not in objection to it, but they want the property owner to be aware that, that the pool or pool house could be inundated with stormwater runoff. They're not, the property takes on that liability, I mean, the property owner takes on the liability in removing the easement.
Is there a way possibly, if not now, in the future, we could, in these cases, we don't see them very often, have any confirmation that the downstream downhill parcels have been made aware of the situation? And they have consented?
So, part of the application prac, part process is that we have to have signed property owners affected. So, what you see on your screen here is...
Those are the only property owners?
Those are the ones that were found to be within the area where runoff may affect them.
Triangle piece, that's right behind it.
All right.
Keep in mind, this is a drainage easement that apparently has not been active or in use at all. It only affects people upstream because it's not been in use. There's no, there's no tile, there's no pipe, there's no, there's no surface area that, there's no riprap. There's nothing here. So, if you go abandon an easement which isn't in use today, it isn't going to affect the downstream folks at all.
We have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Even though this says drainage utility easement at the top of your screen. All in favor to approve, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. All right. Mr. Farmer, can I quit in the middle of a meeting?
Our last case is VA 2025-139 Conisty Pump Station, requesting a variance from LDR 8.22.2, which requires a 100-foot riparian buffer as measured from the top of the spring, the stream bank inland to be established along each side of all intermittent perennial and blue line streams within a watershed draining 50 acres or more. The applicant states the purpose is for a pump station on site. Here is the site outlined in red. And here is an image of the site. SAC comments that were provided at last month's meeting from Land Development. The Land Development Division has no objections to this request, given that A, it is a public utility use and allowed encroachment under C, and B, allowed as an exemption as they have an approved U.S. Army Corps of Engineer permit. Staff recommends approval of the variance as requested. Mr. Chairman?
All right, any questions for staff? We have no speaker signed up for this one either.
I'd like to know why this is coming before us.
So...
Because reading 822 of the LDR, I don't see why staff or engineering or permit office or someone else couldn't have just said, "Okay," and then that come through us because, you know, we're constantly told that sewer isn't in our purview, so...
So, the pump, so for the pump station that's going to be put on site, they are required to keep a, a buffer from the, the stream for 8.22. They actually went through Board of Zoning Appeals approval for the pump station on this site because pump stations are a public utility and they're special exception to be required. So, they got their BZA approval, and now they're coming to be located within that stream buffer area that would be required.
Okay, I have a master's in sewer construction. It's called lessons learned. And I see we do have some representatives from ReWah. So, my question is, how close and how much of this, of this riparian buffer is being planned to use? And why? Because it looks like a big empty parcel to me.
It is a big empty parcel.
Would you like to call up somebody? Because he didn't sign up.
Yes, I just did.
Okay.
Is that okay, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
I'm sorry. I didn't ask permission.
Zach Dukes, ReWah. Excuse me, sir?
Name and address.
Oh, Zach Dukes, 561 Malden Road. So, we're, we're building outside of the 500-year floodplains. We're kind of like pinched in between Malden Road and the 500-year floodplain. After that, the riparian buffer continues up into Malden Road. So, I mean, the road is even built within the riparian buffer there.
That's 100 feet?
Yes. If you get up to the, I guess, at an angle it is, yes.
So, are you constructing structures?
Yes, it's a pump station.
Not the pump, I'm not talking about the pump station itself. I'm talking about structures, buildings for ReWah offices.
No, no.
No, it's just the pump station.
Yes, yes. It's utility structures, as was, I guess, covered in the, what can be allowed within the encroachment.
And the permit, the permits from the Army Corps of Engineers have already been?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions for anybody that seems to be in the building?
Ms. Chairman, I'll make a motion for approval.
All righty. Mr. Allen made a motion to approve. Ms. Franklin has a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. All righty. Planning report.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you all for coming to our workshop last Thursday on the comp plan update and the open space plan. We sent you those electronic files after the meeting. And I think you see at each of your seats, there's a paper copy further along, speed along your review. Additionally, sorry?
Bless you.
You're welcome. Again, sorry we didn't have those for you last week. Now, those plan, these plans are also available online for the public's consumption if they want to. It's available on our website. The open space plan was also posted on the county's Facebook page today, a link to it. So, the public has access to these same documents. They're welcome to review them. Both plans will be back on the September agenda for your next Planning Commission meeting for feedback. And we'll also have the open space plan on there for vote, like we discussed last week. Now, clearly, as you read through these, as you develop comments, if you decide that's not enough time to move forward, then let's talk about it. We can always, you know, continue it on to another agenda. That's not a problem. But we're going to bring it back for official discussion, at the very least, at our next meeting. That's the plan. Now, I know you probably have a lot of questions or you're formulating a lot of questions. We want to be available to you. So, if you will email those questions to me and to Jonathan Hannah, our long-range planning manager, and then include everybody on the Planning Commission as well, just so everybody knows what questions are being asked, we'll build, we'll build a list of questions and have complete answers for you in September based off those, those questions you submit.
I have a quick question maybe you can answer now. As I recall, it's an update, it's a separate document, the comprehensive plan update, the five-year update. It's a separate document. I guess initially, before I saw that, I thought there was going to be an update to the existing comprehensive plan. Yeah, it's kind of hard to reconcile. That's kind of why I was under that impression.
It is a separate document from the comp plan. It's a review of what's in the comp plan, where we've been, where we're going, how we're doing. But it is a separate document. You're right. So, that's where we are with that. And like I said, just send us the comments, send us your questions, and we'll be ready for you in September. All right.
Wait a minute, any questions on the planning report?
One last thing, just to throw out for you. There's some information about, from GPATs. They're in the, in your packets. Hope you read that for some meetings there. And we are looking to hire a new planner one in, for the zoning department. We had one of our planners leave, and we're hiring right now. So, we, they should be starting in September, and we'll, we'll give some more information once, once they're on board. Yeah, current planning for zoning.
Was it, is it somebody that's been here for a good while?
The individual who left, that here speaking, they've been, they were here for right around a year.
They left because of you. Is that what you want to hear? Okay.
No, I haven't really dealt with planning too much, thank you.
I'm surprised. All righty. Impact fee, old business, sort of new business.
All right. So, just wanted to give you an update on where we are on the impact fee feasibility study that y'all authorized at the last meeting. Following your vote, we went ahead and put that out, quotes, soliciting consultants to help us develop that. We received two quotes, and as required by the county's procurement policy, we went with the lowest one since it was just written quotes. That is, let's see if I can say their name right, Tissler Vice. And they were awarded the contract, and Carson Vice, its president, will be leading the study. He's actually going to be in town on September 15th. We're going to have a, a meeting where he's going to interview representatives from the various departments where impact fees are being contemplated. Mr. Bickel is going to be a part of that conversation. And as we do that, we'll, that'll kick off the impact fee feasibility study. And as there are, as we get past that initial meeting, as we get that, past those initial interviews, as there are opportunities to participate, we'd invite you to consider that. And if you are interested in participating, speak to Mr. Chairman Bickel.
Do we have a loose, I guess, category of things that we're looking to use impact fees for at this point?
He's going to check all of this. He's going to, he'll interview and talk to everybody until we narrow it down.
So, we've got all categories.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
So, roads and bridges, fire. I believe they're, I believe they're talking to the school district before they come in here with us. We'll have a representative from the sheriff's department there.
Parks.
Parks, exactly.
And once again, Tissler Vice is the, the group that, that made the presentation initially?
Correct. Yeah, that was actually Mr. Vice. He came in and did that. Exactly.
Anybody wants to be involved, let me know.
Just keep us informed.
I always try to, unlike the opposite.
And we'll bring you updates regularly, too, as well, to these meetings.
Okay. Oh, gosh, help me. Any other old business? Any new business? Hearing none, words earned.
Amen. Pass the cornbread.